I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number two, open public forum, anybody that is not on the agenda that wishes to speak. Always go to number three, approval of the amended agenda, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Ryan makes a motion, how about a second, Mike seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, consent agenda, A, minutes, July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. B, MDHA, Stickney Hills, Big Horns, LG two twenty, application for exempt permit for a raffle to be held, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Great Blue Hair. Recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented, I need a motion on that.
I'll move on now.
Mike makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, number five, county commissioner candidate, Jeff Bertram.
Thank you, Mayor, council staff, residents of Cold Spring, Jeff Bertram, Stearns County Commissioner candidate, thanks for putting me on the agenda. I'd like to be put on the agenda that if there's any questions or anything other, rather than the public forum that you can certainly ask, or the public can ask. It's good to be here tonight, it's not the first time you guys have seen me over the years. I've served the city of Cold Spring, ten years in Minnesota House of Representatives, and enjoyed a lot of relationships that I made back then. Continued to serve on the eight years that I was on the Pinzall City Council, I served as Chair of the Stearns County League of Cities, Municipal League. Worked with Commissioner Schmitz at the time, and I also served in the Minnesota League of Cities Board of Directors for three years. And I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Highway Twenty-three Coalition, helping the four lane process that we're seeing right now, four of us. We're successful in getting a hundred and five million that is building the four lanes as we speak. And that we all swear about when we have to go through that long detour around St. Martin, but it's happening, so that's great. But it's good to be here, and I guess I just want you to know that I want, I want to be a voice for you. This isn't about me, I certainly have done enough and a lot in my life that I'm proud of. But when Commissioner Jeff Mergan decided not to run, and he asked me to run in his place, it was an honor to be asked, and it was an opportunity that I felt that I could give back. I certainly, now more than ever, we need a strong voice, I want to be that voice for you and with you, and I want my experience to go to work for you. I know a lot of people in this community, I was blessed to be start government work at a very young age. I know second and third generations of families in Cold Spring, and that means a lot to me. And it should mean a lot to you, because if you don't, I've always said, if you don't know the people, how can you represent them, and how can they come to you when they, they need something? As I said, I worked with Commissioner Schmitz, who's enjoying vacation tonight, on the city league of municipal league. I served with Counselor Rambler on the Great River Regional Library Board, and I currently serve with Counselor Henon on the Plating Committee. And so I do have a working relationship and a deep relationship that is going to, is going to mean something. This isn't the first time you see me, it won't be the last time you see me, if I get elected, if you allow me, I certainly will come back, and I'll interact with the city. I think counties can do, the county can do more for the cities than what they've kind of done, we can have a deeper, stronger relationship, law enforcement, fire. You know, it was a great, once again, this isn't the first time you've seen me at the Fire Fest, and a lot of the hometown pride days is kicking in, and the Boniface days. This isn't the first time you've seen me as being to that, even when I wasn't running for office, I was still here, and I'll continue to be a part of this community. So I think we just have to look, I believe the biggest disconnect is connecting the people with the county government, there's a big disconnect there, and I want to reconnect that. And then a lot of folks will say something about taxes, one way or the other, raise them or lower them, but really, it's not about taxes, it's about spending. You can't lower taxes if you don't look at spending, and I can say I've followed county government for quite some time, and nobody really questions or looks at the spending part of any equation. In the eight years of the city council, me and three members, three of us, two other members and I, led the charge of looking at spending, and in the two million dollar budget, two point two million. We cut two hundred thousand dollars out of that budget, and nobody felt a thing, nobody was hurt, law enforcement, street, water, fire. But we went back to our core mission, and sometimes we have to remind ourselves, what's our mission, what's our core mission? And I want to be able to have, be that voice, I'll only be one of five if I'm elected, but obviously, it's going to, the conversation's going to happen. What I can promise you is, we will have the conversation, how the vote ends up, I don't know, but we'll have that conversation. But of course, there are seven of us running, I certainly am working hard to get out, making my rounds around city council meetings, and township meetings, and other functions. And certainly would appreciate your vote, the residents' votes, on August ninth. Cold Spring is one of the sites where you can vote already, August second, and so you can vote, a lot of people don't know that, it's new, I think it's new, Bridgette?
Second time.
Second time? But where you can vote the Tuesday before, so you can vote Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and part of Saturday even, and then of course, on the Tuesday on the regular election. Oh, and Monday too?
Monday till five.
Got it.
Seven thirty to four thirty.
Every day, except for Saturday.
And seven to five on Monday, ten to three on Saturday.
Got it, so there's certainly no excuse not to, you know, the Randy Schifels, the County Auditorial Treasurer, says the estimate ten percent. Oh, I should maybe just mention, I think you maybe know by now, but just in case you don't, the district runs from Pinzall, Zion Township, up to St. Martin. To the, on the west end of Stearns County, so it's Pinzall, Zion Township, all the way through Roscoe, Richmond, Cold Spring, Rockville, St. Augusta. To the east, then it goes from St. John's, Collegeville Township, through Ian Valley, over to Kimball. And so it's a southern slice of Stearns County, thirty-three thousand people, a lot of lakes, certainly a lot of agriculture and industry types of businesses. But Randy Schifels estimated ten percent will vote, which is three thousand people, I think it's going to be higher than that, from what I'm hearing, because of the Recore referendum. Kimball's got a referendum, so I think it's going to be a little bit higher than that, but, and I certainly hope it is, I don't think anybody should slip in with ten, fifteen, twenty votes. And with seven of us running, two votes could make the difference, so I guess that's why I'm all about asking for the support, answering questions that people might have. So if there are any questions in the council, or the, or to your discretion, if the public has any, certainly be more than happy to answer them. Or else I'll just leave with saying, certainly would appreciate your support, and keep in touch, I gave you my card, go to my Facebook page, Jeff Bertram for County Commissioner. I've got a website, www.Jeff-Bertram.com, it's got a lot of information on it, and certainly have had a news release out eight weeks ago. I've really tried more than, I think, anybody to explain issues, and what the, what, it's not just a meet and greet where you meet somebody for three minutes and say, I want you to vote for me. It's a lot deeper than that for me, so I've tried to do that, so if there are any questions, be more than happy to answer them, or else certainly feel free to be in touch with me.
Any other here got anything?
No.
Thank you for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hope you don't mind if I leave, I'm going to try to do some door knocking before it rains, otherwise.
We might have missed that.
Maybe I missed it there, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
Thank you.
Number six, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to execute and deliver tax abatement agreement with Alliance Land and Development LLC, Corey Garrett, hi, Corey.
Back.
Yeah, alright, it's been a while, nice to see you back.
Thank you.
This is the final, this is the final piece. We applied with Corey's help for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency grant last December, or January, and we got it in April. I believe it was in November that the council, it was either October, November, the council approved TIP, I mean, the tax abatement for the parcel. And so now that he's ready to start building, this is the final document, this resolution and the agreement that it references, it's the final document to put all those together. And then his building permit's actually ready for him to come and pick up.
So, recommendation then, recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to execute and deliver tax abatement agreement with Alliance and Development LLC. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion, how about a second? Fran seconds it, any discussion on it?
Well, I read it, it's a long.
Yeah, long, boring treatment. Okay, any other discussion, otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Alright, I'll send you an executive copy.
Alright, sounds great, thank you all.
You got the email about the.
Next Thursday is closing, and then we're going to start moving some dirt.
Alright, right after that?
Yep.
Okay.
So probably the following week, we'll move it.
When do you think it's going to be done, or?
A year from when we start.
A year?
So about this time next year.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, we'll keep you updated.
Yeah.
We're excited, and I'm really excited, we've worked really hard on this, it's been two years. But the grant was a huge, it was state of Minnesota, out of twenty applicants, ten were, ten were selected, Cold Spring was one of the ones that got the full ask. One of maybe you, what, two maybe or three?
Yeah, I think two.
That got the full ask, so they saw the need and, and sent the funds, so it's good, so we're excited.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
Alright, thanks, Corey.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Thanks, Corey.
Okay, number seven, sale of lot two, block three, Cold Spring Business Park, Troy Kramer. Hi Troy.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, you?
Good, good.
So this is the final, so you have in front of you a very pared down purchase agreement, because we already drafted the contract for deed, to be all set and ready, so that we can then, we're in the process of getting a closing date set. And it meets all requirements that Troy has, and it will be the last lot in the business park, so.
Alright, recommendation to approve the purchase agreement and contract for deed for lot two, block three, Cold Spring Business Park as presented, I need a motion on that. I'll make a motion, Fran makes a motion, how about a second, Mike seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries, there you go.
Thank you.
I'll get a copy of the purchase agreement signed tonight, I'll scan it to you, but send it to the closing as original.
Okay.
Okay? And then we'll get the dates from them.
Okay.
Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks guys. Alright, number eight, request to install a shade structure over bikes in Alexander Park, Mike Weber.
I think you know, we have a bike truck, the ReWheeler's in town here, been around twenty years or so, or more. And we, we would, we've been working on this for a while, but we fixed up a number of bikes, and we have twelve of them, on a cement pad down on the southwest corner of the, of the park, and we'd like to, when I say we, I've talked to my fellow ReWheeler's, and they need to know that the city is kind of behind it, and will approve the fact, you know, we want to improve on it by putting a cover over the top of it, a shelter over the top of it. I've got a kind of a tentative picture here of it.
I should let the council know that what I put in the memo, that plan has been changed, we're not going to, Mike's no longer looking to purchase the one from the company that was, or is not.
We talked the other day about, you know, the fact that it would, the structure itself would be fifteen thousand dollars. And the proposed amount that it would cost to put it in, install it, was ten thousand dollars from the company. I was going to go through the work of trying to get a bid for somebody, a welder that could put together a framework, and do basically the same thing. But we want it to be in keeping with the rest of the park, in the colors of the, you know, the structure, and the canopy that would go on it. So the price would, of fifteen thousand dollars would include the structure, but it would not include actually erecting it or putting it up. And so, but I did want you to look at it. It's a can lever structure. That would, the, the actual posts that would hold it up in place would be on, on the east side of the bikes. And then it would can lever over the shelf, over the bike stand, by, I think it's, the dimensions are like twelve by twenty-four, right in there. And.
Is that a canvas canopy?
Pardon?
Canvas canopy?
Yeah, it's the same material that they use for the other canopies, it's pretty durable, and, and it would be taken down after we get the bikes in, it would be taken down and stored. Yeah, the reason why, the bikes take a beating out there in the weather, in the summertime, and just making the site, you know, more attractive, and, and I didn't want to put some kind of shack up there, that is, over it. And, and I know you wouldn't allow me to do that anyway, so, but I would just like to have the, the ReWheeler's would fund five thousand of it. And I've talked to the granite company about possible more, you know, like kind of sponsorship or whatever. And right now, they, they don't have the funds to do it, supposedly, but I would table this thing until we did have the funds to do it. And, but I just wanted to make you, you know, aware of, of having it put up. And John Stewie told me that, you know, I needed to talk to you guys, get that approval first, and just to let you know that I'm, I'm working on it, and and I just read this in this first edition of the city viewpoint, that there will be funding available for the Main Street revitalization grant.
That will qualify.
Are you sure?
A hundred percent.
So new construction, eh? And basically, we revitalize it, you know, continuing to improve on the, on the park, being that, I, I think, the park.
It's de-funded, and so I, I really don't think that would qualify, and it's for
Yeah.
businesses, and to help businesses.
Okay, I just.
So you're just wanting to know, we approved the idea?
Yeah.
You're not asking for money?
No, not at this time, it, it's for sure, it won't be until next year, so, but in the meantime, I'd like to secure funding for it. And then also, you think the, the city itself would help out with the, you know, putting the structure up, once we have a, have a structure? That would be another, another thing, you know, that. And I, I think we probably have to have a consultant to make sure, they sent out all of the drawings for the footings and, and all of that, so we would have that in hand. But somebody would supervise it, and the granite company people have indicated that they would help on that part of it. You know, just to make sure it's in, in keeping with the rest of the structure, the other structures are, but. So.
So where are you going to get the rest of the funding, you guys said you're going to put in five thousand?
Yeah, we put in five thousand, I've talked to the Lions Club, and they said they needed more, I didn't have a drawing or anything to show them.
Okay, okay.
And, and now I do.
So you're going to start fundraising now then? If we, if we agree to it, you're going to start fundraising for it?
Pardon?
Yeah.
Are you going to start fundraising for it then?
Yeah.
If we agree to say, if we say yes to you, to putting it there?
Yep.
Are you, then you're going to start fundraising for it, or what?
Yeah, I'm working on it, you know, and finding other sources for, for funding on it, but you know, this weekend, or with the, you know, hometown pride days, we're going to have bikes to, but all the funding is going to be donated to to three different causes, the library, and the food shelf, and the, the storage facility. So, and, and the, the amount of money we have in it, in the, our fund. Well, we're, we're going to be also discontinuing the program, the, the bike donation in, in, and fixing them up. And the reason is, we just don't have, I'm trying to secure a space, and the co-op, it needs all the space that they've got, they can. And last spring, we were really in their way a lot, and until we got rid of some of the bikes. Now we had a hundred and fifty bikes stored various places around.
What do you guys think?
What we're proving is the idea, I guess we're saying it's okay to do that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that recommendation still means that.
Yeah. I would make that motion.
Is there zoning issues that we need to be concerned about, or anything with building codes?
No, because it would be, well, yeah, there would be, when they come, we would have it checked for building code, to make sure, I mean, there isn't a building code, there's just installation, and we would have a building permit put in
Okay.
for the structure, and then as to, it would become a city, it's not a zoning issue, because it's a, it's a public facility, which is allowed in that zone.
Well, I can see a need to cover the bikes, I mean, I think that makes some sense, and so I'd make that motion.
Should I read a rec?
On the, on the, included in the, in the fifteen thousand, it's fourteen, actually, it's fourteen five.
Okay.
And included in that is Minnesota Professional Engineers sealed drawings, so, you know, that would be just submitted to the, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to read a recommendation, to approve or deny the Cold Spring ReWheeler's plan to install a canopy over the rental bike rack in Alexander Park. Is that what you would be?
I would make that motion to.
You would make that motion to.
To approve the plan.
To approve the, to, to approve the plan to go ahead with it.
Right, not the installation at this point.
No.
Because it says the plan.
Yeah.
It's just the plan, it's, oh, it's just the plan.
Okay, okay, Mike makes a motion on that, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep, thanks.
Yep.
Number nine, Public Works Director Report, John Stevie, along with Brian mentioned. And in parentheses, no report, no request.
Just be here for any questions. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, also, as you can see, I have nothing to report or request tonight.
Anybody got anything for John?
Anything new on the water usage, and possibly working on
Yeah.
price increases or?
Yep, staff met, Bridgette, Chris, I, we have a plan together that'll be presented probably at the next council meeting, and it will affect September first. The problem is, is we do bi-months of building, so we're going to put it in the middle of a cycle, because it'll make it a nightmare for Laura, so.
Sure.
It'll be starting September first, so going forward, so it'll be the. It'll be starting September first, so going forward. So it'll be the September, October bill.
Okay.
Okay.
And since no good deed goes unpunished, uh, I thought it was a good newsletter. I think you've earned, I think you've earned a job. Well, I think it's good. I mean, I think it's good to send something out. I realize there's some difficulties in getting that done, but I've heard a lot of comments on it. I think it's good communication.
Yeah, I hope that, that form of delivery was hitting all the residents and not certain ones, you know, where somebody did put stuff on social media.
It was that, it was that part of it, yeah.
Need it, so, yeah, Bridget had some things and it turned out really nice.
Yeah, good job.
Thanks.
All right, then we'll move on to number ten, City Engineer Report, Brian Lynch.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just some project updates tonight. Um, twenty-twenty-one brewery improvements, we're mostly, not much has changed, we're mostly sitting waiting for um electrical hardware that's gonna arrive later in the year into next year, so. Kind of waiting on some supply chain things there. Good news is, most of that stuff can't be used until the industrial pretreatment is built anyways, so.
Okay.
Um, the twenty-twenty-two, working on wrapping up the design for that. Similar situation, looking to get a bid this year, so we can start getting some long lead time things going. Um, we might get some work done this fall and otherwise finish it up in the spring. Um, standpipe water tower, uh, we were supposed to be getting steel today. Again, they're running into some delays. I've been told the first week in August, right now, first or second week. So, just kind of like everything else, we're seeing problems getting things, so. Um, I've talked to them quite a bit. They have everything ready. As soon as they can get the steel, they're gonna start bringing to site, start building it up, so. Should go up pretty quick, otherwise we're just waiting on, waiting on the delivery of the material and they, they are, as soon as it's ready, they're sending a truck, so. We're waiting on the manufacturer.
How big is that gonna be? Twenty?
Fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet for across?
Eighty, eighty-five feet tall. About past the height of the other one.
My brother's harvest will work. That's twenty feet.
Yeah.
Take a little more. Might be hard-
You wanna donate it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I could probably go get it from him, since it's not being used.
That'd be a little harder to disinfect. Um, the industrial pretreatment, if you've driven to the east side of town, you see we have a large pile of sand and a big crane there, so. Uh, right now, we're working on digging out the um, film material, that's where the building's gonna go. We're digging that out down to the, to the virgin material, compacting that and then putting the sand back in in layers, so we can start building the building. End of this week, early next, they're gonna start digging in some of the pipe and then uh, maybe next week start concrete pours for the tank portions of it. Moving along. And then the water plant, we just had an update meeting today. Um, they're getting kind of their last deliveries of internal piping. They have all the site piping done. So we're starting to get closer to talking about startup and some of those things, so it's, that one's coming together pretty nicely. That's all I have.
Anybody got anything for Brian? Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Number eleven, Police Department Report, Chief Bloom.
Mayor Council, good evening.
Hi. Good evening.
Uh, in the pack I put some information um, for leasing vehicles through Enterprise. Uh, more and more agencies are going to, it actually sank out is in the process of switching their entire law enforcement fleet over to leasing. Um, one of their reps came and gave us, or me, John and Bridget, a presentation a week or two ago um, with some of the basic information they requested. All I'm requesting now, and what, what they projected right now was over a hundred thousand dollars in savings in over a ten-year span. And it would, to be part of the program, you have to have at least twenty vehicles citywide. So my department isn't big enough to do it for law enforcement, it makes a good amount of sense looking at it. So it would have to be a citywide vehicle, so that would include Public Works and that type of thing. So, right now, all I'm asking is, can we continue to work with them, be able to bring information back for them to do a presentation for you guys and make a decision down the road here?
Well, I don't think it hurts to get more information. I have a lot of questions. I, I don't, I, basically, it kind of boils down to one big question. How does a leasing company make money and we save money at the same time? They're making money off of us, but then we're supposed to be saving money too? Maybe that's a question you could ask them.
So the, the, the basic thing is, is that cities can buy um, vehicles at the, a, a state rate. So that's eight to ten thousand dollars off a sticker price. So, what they do is, they have a city drive them for three to five, you know, three to four years and, and then they crunch the numbers for you and then they can, they're actually turning around and selling, after three years, they're selling vehicles for eight thousand dollars over what you're purchasing them for. After using them for three years. So there's cities out there that are actually taking that money and turning it, putting it back into other projects.
So they're using that state?
So they're, they're leasing to cities to be able to get that state bid price and then turn around and sell it and that's, and then a lot of that revenue comes back to the city when they sell the vehicle.
So would they be talking about replacing all the cars immediately or us?
It would be staggered over several years.
So would they, we would have to sell our cars and they would buy them from us or?
They would then buy them from us, lease us a new one and then whatever they-
We have now, they would.
Correct.
They would buy those from us?
Yes.
And then would they all be new vehicles?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
The leased ones would all be branded.
And their, their profit is, actually, they're like the bank. So their profit is the five percent or four percent they charge. That's where their profit is at. There's no other profit. They don't, they don't make money selling the vehicles, all their, all the money that that vehicle sells for goes to the city. They're just the bank, so they get a percentage of the lease.
Uh, right.
It seems like a good program and that's why I wanna be able to just dive door, dive into more information and see what the actual numbers look like and-
And verify we have sufficient vehicle numbers.
One thing I always was wondering was mileage per year. I mean, a lot of these companies, they have that. They have a certain amount of miles that-
They just don't, um, cause like, when we were going through COVID and couldn't find vehicles, I actually went to Schwieners and they won't actually lease vehicles to law enforcement? Weird. Um, but, so i- in like a, a, a normal lease, yes, you have mileage, but in this program, we don't.
You don't have. Who does the maintenance and repairs?
So, and that's where a lot of that, a lot of it will be, any major repairs will still be warranted, any oil change, that kind of stuff would still be done by the, the city or a vendor that we choose. But then, the majority of those bigger fixes would probably, if there was issues, it would be un- under warranty yet. So maintenance costs would go, we don't.
Sounds interesting.
And, and it, it seems like a good program and yeah, just looking, just a, a thumbs up to continue to work with them to bring information back.
Don't see any harm in that.
I'll read that recommendation then. To approve continuing discussions with Enterprise Fleet Management. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Brian makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Mike seconds at any discussion on it. Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The only other thing I had is next Tuesday, um, August second is National Night Out. Um, if anybody in town is having a block party, get together, anything in their neighborhoods, let us know. Um, and we'll make sure to have an officer stop by, just get ahold of our office and we can schedule things and get people on the schedule.
Are you guys having something separate?
So, in Cold Spring, we're just doing the block parties. If anybody's having a block party, we'll attend those. In Richmond, where they're doing the bike rodeo that night, um, at Centennial Park, um, along with their music in the park. But we don't have an event in Cold Spring planned. We've, we've tried for several years and we're trying to figure out a way to get more people involved, cause it's, it's usually a, a smaller turnout, so. Just trying to come up with ways to get people engaged in that.
All right.
And then, oh yeah, I didn't have it on my thing, but uh, over the last couple days, uh, Richmond sent um, their proposal back for the council. Um, just time for you guys to have a discussion on what your plans are, if you wanna meet with them to further negotiate or kind of what direction to go from here.
Or you can table it since Councilmember Schmidt isn't here.
I think Nug needs to be here, I think, for that. He was chief negotiator, so I think we should table it.
I agree. Yeah.
So a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I'll second. Mike made a motion to table it. Ryan seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And that's all I have unless you guys have questions for me?
Thank you.
Nope, we got anything?
Thank you. Okay, number twelve, City Administrator Report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. The first one on there is Grackton Health, um, the hospital on Crays Mill Road. They have a large picture window on their west side facing the road. And um, with all of the trucking up there and going between the two buildings, um, trucks park there and it's, it's disturbing to the vulnerable um, clients and it's also disturbing to the staff. So they were requesting a uh, no parking sign from the corner to their, not the access to their garbage, but to their actual parking lot. You know, they, they have two driveways. One goes to their service center and one goes to their driveway.
Why would there, why would we have any parking there anyway?
Oh, there's no sign, so we need to have council approval to put signs.
I mean, it's not very wide there.
Uh, it's crazy. It's a standard road. It's a sixty-six.
Somewhere on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he, it's got the, it is a bad place, cause I believe it has the um, surmountable curves, curves up there.
Yeah, it gets pretty congested.
Yeah, so they had asked for their safety and obviously the, how it works and police are fine with it, putting it from the corner to at least there. Or we could do the whole way to the, put it on both sides, it's up to you on like-
I don't think they should be parking there anyway. I mean, if there's-
Yeah, there's parking lots all over up there they can park.
Exactly.
So, we're gonna amend that to um, Crays Mill Road along the north end south, all the way from the corner to the
No parking from one-
to the brewery's property.
I'd make that motion.
Well, I'm gonna, okay. I'm sorry, do I need to read the recommendation then?
I think I just kind of created it for you, if you're okay with that?
Then Mike made that motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Ryan seconded. Any discussion, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, the next two, I don't know if you wanna also table those till Doug's here, cause I don't know what dates he can come. Uh, the first one is the staffing study. You had asked for a workshop to go over it more in-depth. Um, and then the one, the next one is uh, negotiations for contracts this year. So I don't know if you wanna wait on both of those until, until the tenth?
Yeah, probably, uh.
Okay.
Or, I need a motion, motion that-
You could probably do a motion to table B and C.
Table B and C?
Yeah, move to table B and C.
Ryan makes a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Mike seconded. Any discussion, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And last, I forwarded to you a letter this morning of my resignation. Um, I have accepted a petition elsewhere and I they did, you know, our, sorry, policy is twenty days, but I did ask them to give me more than that, so uh, twenty-fifth of August will be my last day. Serving by the city of Cold Spring.
All right, recommendation to accept the resignation of the city administrator effective August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Brian makes a motion, how about a, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconded. Any discussion on it?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for uh, everything you've done for the city.
Yes.
I've appreciated it, I've enjoyed it.
I'm a pleasure working with you.
Done a lot for, done a lot for the city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Um, one thing I do have, now the other, I did request um, from David Drona Associates, they're, they're headhunter for municipal positions. They do finance directors, they do human resource directors for cities. They're actually working with Richmond to find their city administrator. Um, they do have a proposal that I got late today, um, and we can put it on for the tenth and they will come and explain it. It's um, it's a, it is expensive, but they put together a lot of, they put the whole package together, they market it, they do all of that and what they're doing with Richmond. It's a twenty-two thousand dollar cost, but they do give you a two-year guarantee. Um, and I can reach out to other headhunters too. I would go with DDD, uh, David Drona probably does the most, any headhunter.
The league doesn't do this at all?
No, they don't. So, but they have worked with the league.
They must advertise to the league, probably.
Yeah, they will. They advertise on the league, they have their own municipal web, they advertise in um, other executive type uh, average uh, brochures and things like that. Um, so I will forward this to all of you. I also have copies here if you wanna take it home. And we could put it on for the tenth or um, and then we'll come and answer some of your questions and I can put it on fairly agenda if you want me to do that. It's actually, if I were staying, it's less than what you would pay me for the last quarter or the last four months of the year, so.
I need-
I don't think we voted on that.
No, we didn't. I had motion in the second.
Oh, I thought I heard for it.
I-
I don't think so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, aye.
Figured it was gonna be a-
You just put that on the agenda.
Yeah, I'll put that on the agenda and if you wanna take the packet now, since I have it, you can read it and then I'll put it on for the next one. And then, oh, he's here. Perfect timing.
You're, you're done then?
I'm done.
Okay, number thirteen, Fire Department, request to increase retirement benefits.
Yeah, if I could, maybe first of all, just um, extend a, a thank you to the council, um, Bridget, all the city employees that have helped with Fire Fest, all the community members that attended and all the businesses that uh, continued their support. Fire Fest was a Saturday, it was a, another great success and a lot of hard work and a lot of fun and um, been a great turnout and I think things went as, as well as could be expected, even with the bit of rain that we had on Saturday setting up. But we had, we really get a, a good start on Friday, so, um, and also thank the brewery, obviously, of them. Doing what they do and allowing us to use their property is, is pretty key. So I know that's a little bit off topic, but I just wanted to say thank you for everything with Fire Fest. Um, here tonight, just to ask um, for your approval, we just approved it at our meeting to increase our pension. Uh, pension's currently two thousand four hundred dollars per year of service. Um, we are asking to increase that to two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year of service. With that increase, uh, that would still leave a surplus of over eighty-two thousand dollars after all members were to leave. Um, there's a calculation that we get through KDB, it's, it's through the state, they provide this big spreadsheet that's part of our audit that just finished. Um, so we'd still have over eight and a half percent surplus and that's even with discounting. Um, all the numbers are based off of year-end twenty-one. Obviously, we all know what the financial markets have done over the course of the first six months of twenty-two. Um, so we did discount out um, about twenty percent um, to reflect the loss that we've shown so far. So we did factor in what's already happened in twenty-two into this. And so even with that, we would still have that eight and a half percent surplus, so. Um, it's not that we're basing these numbers off of year-end twenty-one, it's, we did do some adjusting.
And this money comes out of that fund.
Yep, out of our special fund, yep. So it's nothing that's directly from the city, but um, if we were to have a shortfall, we would have to lower our amount. If we didn't, then the city would be responsible to, to cover that shortfall, but we're still, we're still above that, so. Any questions on that?
You've calculated this all out for the ages of the people?
Yep, that spreadsheet that KDB fills out has everybody's start date and leave of absences um, based off of where our benefit is at or, and we, we as the board um, kind of looked at different options and that's where we settled, where we, we're still comfortable with um, having some surplus and not pushing that to zero. Um, yet also um, a number that's um, also respectful of the members that are on for the hard work that they've done. There's a, you know, a little bit of a reward for that.
All right, recommendation to approve the recommendation of the Fire Department Lea's Association and and increase the retirement benefits from twenty-four hundred dollars to two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I need a motion on that.
I'll make that.
Brian makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconded. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks, John.
Yep, thanks. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, number fourteen, list of bills and additions, recommendation to review and accept payment of the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff. I need a motion on that. I'll make that motion. Brian makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconded. Any discussion, otherwise all those in favor say aye.
I just had a question.
Okay.
Uh, just one question. Forty-five, eight, forty-seven thousand dollars USA blue book, it says transmitter in part. Forty-five, eight, forty-seven thousand dollars USA book. It says transmitter in park. What's that?
Transmitter in parks with USA book, probably a lift station transmitter.
Okay, that answers my question.
All right, any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. General questions and comments from city council. Brian?
I have nothing.
Mike?
Uh, not this time, you know.
I have nothing. Number sixteen, motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Brian makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Cheers, Seth.